Pretty good. It was like before rebels were good.
Mission meeting? Everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yep.
Pleasure on the minutes, somebody like to take a motion?
So move.
So good.
All right, taken by Mr. Morris, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. For the folks that are here for any sort of a public hearing tonight, the public hearing actually is for the zoning ordinance changes, not, not for the solar facility. So just let y'all know that up front. So we're going to take care of this first, public hearing and the amendment stuff, and then we'll move to the solar thing. Holly?
Okay, so you all, last year we made quite a few changes to the M1 and M2 zoning district as far as the lot size and front carriage and front setback. Recently from the industrial park, we ran into some issues and we are proposing to reduce setbacks for the side and the rear in M1 and M2 industrial and B1 and B2 business. Essentially reducing this will allow us to essentially densely cactivate the industrial park. We don't have to rezone additional parcels. So this is mainly just a technicality to get this one last part of M1 and M2 up to date.
Did it? Anything else? Okay. All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this amendment change? But it all? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any comments or anything you, questions for Holly?
Does that imply if it's against a different district? Are free?
Yes, so it's super depending where it's next to. Yeah, so it's 10 feet if it touches industrial or business. But if it touches ag or residential, real residential, it has to be 25 feet from the property line.
So that part didn't change?
It got decreased because it used to be either 25 or 100 for certain residential zoning districts.
What was the reason for it being decreased from 100 to 50?
Actually, the economic development authority, this was requested by them. Yes, yes, to serve some of the parcels in the new section that was purchased by RJ Smith. Their buildings are a bit larger than were anticipated, so we're trying to accommodate them.
Okay. Anybody else? I would entertain a motion to accept it or not accept it. Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to accept the changes.
Thank you.
Taken by Mr. Ramsey. All of you, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, like sign? All right, motion pass. All right, so now we'll move on to the solar facility. Holly?
We did the public hearing for this last month, so we're not going to be having one today. However, we do have the applicants here. I'm sure you all have some questions for them. And they also would probably like to give you an update on the past month of talking to the landowners and any changes they made. So you all can start asking questions, or would you like them to speak first?
Let them go ahead and speak. They've changed.
Good evening, my name is Wes Andrews. I'm with the porch. Spoken to you all a couple of times. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for your, your time and consideration of the Amelia Energy Facility. Since our last proposal, we have not made any material changes, but I did want to rehash the changes that we made over the last year. We initially had a community meeting in May of 2021 where we invited neighbors to come and hear about the project. We answered questions and made some adjustments to the project based on that meeting, primarily removing some panel areas out of a ag field on West Creek Road. In November, we had our informational meeting in front of the commission. There were some meetings that came out of that and follow up where we added some additional buffering to an area off of the Four House Road, part of the project. And then in December, when we had the public, public hearing, there was of course a extensive discussion that came out of that meeting and based on that discussion as well as meetings we held in the months following that meeting, we made significant changes to the layout of the project. We removed any of the project that was towards Four House Road as well as West Creek Road. We limited the panel areas to a maximum of 635 acres and essentially reduced the layout of the project. And that was a proposal you heard last month. That layout was, was based on, like I said, a lot of discussions that we had and concerns that were raised, whether it was used sheds or active farmland. We also removed under 29 acres of, of road crops from that as well. So at this point, the project is not proposing to put any solar panels within 1,000 feet of a residence or within 1,200 feet of a public road. And we'll have significant buffering from vegetation as well as around the site. So I just wanted to leave you with that. And again, thank you for your time tonight.
Anybody have any questions, gentlemen? I got a couple. Oh, I always do. Are you, one taste, are you, are you guys going to run this for 30 years or you intend to build it and sell it?
Typically in the past, we have maintained ownership in some, some way.
Okay. One of the things that you were talking about enhancement to the county was, was increased personal property, increased property taxes. Is, are you, is it going to go up from what the current owners are paying property taxes now? Because I know a lot of it's probably land use, which is a reduced rate.
Part of it is land use, not, not all of it. There will be additional tax revenue that will come from machinery tools tax as well as the, the siding agreement that we're forwarding to the board, proposing an additional annual payment as well as upfront payments.
Okay, and I'm not, like I said, I don't know, I wasn't sure because it's, it's really not a farm. It has nothing to do with agriculture. It's more of a industrial site. I didn't know if taxes, property values or taxes would increase and come out of land use because it was no longer being used actually as a, as a agricultural type operator.
The project that was, that is in land use will not continue to be in land use.
Okay.
That will be changed.
All right, that was one of my questions. You aware that the Cary, North Carolina plant Dominion has shut that down because they had two fires within a week and they couldn't determine which, what caused them? You aware of that? No, like two weeks ago, okay? Have you all thought about trying to find out why they, why that happened? We don't want that to happen here.
Certainly, I mean it, I can't speak to exactly why there's fires happening, but you know, it is something that could happen, but we haven't had that occur on any of our sites and
And theirs could have been due to batteries, I'm not sure.
Sure.
You know, I don't, I don't know what the, the real reason was, I kind of hush, hush about it, at least from my end of it. On your, your Kimmel and Horn on page eight on your decommission plan, you talk about you're going to restore the property back to the, back to its pre-project conditions? But then it says you're going to leave it in a meadow-like form. Are you going to put it back in trees like it was? Or are you going to sow grass and leave? I'm just curious.
We are restoring it in the sense that we are removing anything associated, associated with the project. We, we would not be telling the landowner what they want to do with the next. If they want to plant trees, they can do that, but it would be removing all the equipment.
Okay. And you're still not going to put a, you're still not planning on putting a bond on it for the first five years?
Correct, in our proposal we're, we're not.
What happens if a tornado comes through there a year or four and completely tears it all to pieces and it's beyond repair? Are you going to spend another $100 million rebuilding it or are you just going to say it's done?
Well, I guess similar to the discussion that was had last, I mean, there is insurance on the project and once it's built, that, you know, the, the biggest investment has been made and it's, it's an extremely valuable asset at that point. So I can't imagine a case where, you know, someone would walk away from that and, you know, insurance would cover if there was some limited damage to a project, even if it is significant. To where you'd want to get it to be powered as soon as you could.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious. It kind of bothers me that, that, that you want to, you're going to put a, a bond on it from year five to year 30, but you're not going to bond the first five years. What's the reason behind that?
Essentially in our discussions with coming up with a siding agreement, that was a way for us to be able to provide more upfront investment in the county directly by not having to put up the cost of that bond right, right upfront.
Okay, so it's a cost thing. I mean, I mean, honestly, and I'm, and I, I guess I'm speaking is not as, Vice Chairman speaking is Roy Easter, Planning Commissioner, is it that, you know, the, the $10 million over 30-year period is $333,000 a year, basically. We get almost that much every month from the landfill, the tipping fees. It's not, so you're not talking about a huge amount of money. It's not a big negotiator as far as I'm concerned. You know, it's just, it just seems relatively small compared to other industries in the county that's, that's paying a whole lot more, but anyway, I just want to say that. Also in your plan, you talk about a, if inflation rate on the bond part of one and a half percent. I, I think that's way off. I've, it hadn't been one and a half percent in my lifetime probably, per year. I mean, it's, and, and I'm not saying it needs to be 8% like it is now, but I'm just saying it, it just seems like it's extremely low compared. Normal cost of living is, is 3, 3.5% at least.
And that's, that would be reassessed every five years based on the ordinance.
Okay. And you understand that the, that the governor just determined that the, that those panels are actually impervious, right? That was a determination was made. And I see that being a problem along the stream, not that you don't have the same amount of land there and the same amount of rainfall that would normally be over the whole piece of land, but those panels are gathering all that rain and dumping it in one spot when it comes off the edge of that panels. It's not going to be any more runoff than it was, would have been if you weren't there. It's just going to be more concentrated. It's going to be a lot, it's going to be quicker. You understand what I'm saying? Because you're dumping everything that's on those panels off into a, a ditch or, or into one spot. And I, I see that being a problem, but that's, that's probably a DEQ thing rather than anything that, because I know they're getting involved right now with excessive runoff and erosion and stuff like that.
Right, and that's a discussion that's been ongoing. You know, with a project that we intend to build, they're tracking panels, so you know, if you get into the nitty gritty of it, the, the drip line is, is moving and there's reasons why that hasn't been impervious to date because it's, it's not really, it's not the same as asphalt, right?
Right.
It's different. And it's this, it's this thing that's not quite one thing. So they're figuring out what to do with it and, you know, the stormwater regulations that have been in place are still very stringent and you know, obviously as this land use becomes more common, more people are thinking about it and it's becoming something that is getting, you know, a second look.
Right, I mean, my, my biggest thing is it's not going to be a lot of absorption up from, from the ground under those panels. You're going to take something, a panel the size of this table maybe, and all, so all the little drops going into the soil, it's all going to run to here. It's all going to hit it at one time, which is going to be the same amount gallon-wise as runoff, but it's just going to get there a lot quicker because it's all being concentrated. I see that being a problem downstream, but another thing that, one of the websites I looked at talked about the, talked about the wildlife habitat, which is one of the county's biggest resources, that and, and agriculture for the most part. Is it, and I don't see, they recommended, I think it was National Wildlife Federation or somebody recommended leaving alleyways that's not fenced so animals could traverse from one side of the property to the other and not have to go around and not try to jump over your fence and get inside or get caught in the fence and things like that. I understand that's more expensive because it's more fenced to build and stuff like that, but that's something you should seriously consider.
And we do consider that and the layout that we presented is a max extensive layout where we would have fenced in areas that are not, it's not all one just big block. And, you know, we've done projects that have corridors like that built through them just for that concern to, you know, allow deer to move through the, the area. And so we were aware of that and we, you know, we think about that as well.
You would make provisions for it?
We would be open to, I mean, it's, like I said, it's something that people are naturally with the project because we, there's, there are streams back there that are going to break up our layout. And there will be a setback on those streams that will be essentially natural corridors through.
And you're not going to fence across those streams or anything?
We don't fence across streams.
Okay, okay. Uh, one of the things that actually Holly had sent us, a guy in North Carolina had been involved in these things for 30 some years, talked about the studies show a reduction of joining property values of 15 to 30%. It seems like a lot. That's going to harm the people who are close by. And so I think the, and, and that was mentioned before, the reduction in property values, but nobody really put a number on it until this guy put this article out there. 30% reduction in somebody's property value, it seems to me quite extensive. Like a lot. Also another thing that you, that you didn't mention in your decommission plan is it, you probably should consider doing some sort of soil sampling, look for toxins. I know there's minimal amount of lead in the solder and I know you've got cadmium and some other hazardous materials there, but just to make the neighbors happy, you should add that into your plan about doing some sort of soil study to look, make sure it's not excessive about toxins in the soil or groundwater. And that, there's been people that's come to the public hearings just question that same, pretty same thing. Is something y'all would entertain?
Uh, I think so.
All right, that's all I got on my list right now. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, Roy, a lot of those things we could put down as recommendation for the board supervisors certainly consider. But I was think, but I was thinking also, you know, we were talking about that fencing. If, if they could develop some type of wildlife habitat for quail or, or turkey or something like that and all that grassland using warm season grasses or clovers or things like that, that would certainly help as far as wildlife possibilities. And, uh, but I guess it would go back as far as the timbers you were asking. I think right now that land is probably, I don't believe timber land is in land use in the county at this time.
Okay, I, I don't know. It may, it may not be. I don't know.
I think they may be considering it, but, uh, but you brought a lot of important questions out.
Anybody else have any questions?
I got, I got one.
Okay.
Probably more with Ms. Harris. That information you sent out today with the DEQ, I read through it quick, I may miss, but the impervious surfaces was once counted as the post in the ground. And now it's going to the whole panel, which is a lot more square footage. Is that go, did I say that right? Is that going to cause a bigger watershed basins and runoff catch areas being as small square footage of runoff?
I can't speak specifically about what the impacts would be in terms of stormwater design, but there would be probably bigger or different kinds of features that you would need to build. It, it's something that, you know, there are people that spend their whole day doing that, that I, you know, would have to ask about that, but it is, it is, it is a change in terms of the way the water, there's a water quality and a water quantity metric associated with stormwater and based on the calculations that are done. You know, I'm sure it would cause some changes where you're, you're building different kinds of features, but I can't speak towards. At the end of the day, you know, you're, you have a certain amount that you're calculating that's coming off the site and you build the features that it's on to handle that amount.
So as an answer to part of it, DEQ, yeah, it happened literally right after the last meeting. It was like the day after, I believe, or maybe two days after. So basically originally when they came out with it, they said it was going to be immediate. They quickly backed off of that and said that until 2025, so a lot of it will have to do with timeframe too. What, what is your, so a lot of it's got to do with what the timeframe is and how far you are into your project. So they're not requiring projects to redesign immediately like, like they were the day they came out with the memo because they got a lot of feedback, obviously from projects that were at like the 90% level that were then going to go have to redesign the whole project. So then they came out and said, okay, anything that's not approved by us by 2025, we'll have to redesign. So right now they're offering volunteer redesign and you get top priority. You don't have to pay a fee if you choose to redesign, but they're not forcing it until that timeframe. So it, a lot of it has to do with where you are in the process, with DEQ approval, where your erosion and sediment control plans are. And obviously this project's not to that point yet because they wouldn't be since they're just in site development. They haven't done ENS plans yet. So it can be, engineers that, that I work with ran some calculations. Some of the larger solar projects are looking at several million dollars, you know, to build the new stormwater basins and having to redesign. So it definitely would impact their cost. But a lot of it does have to do with timeframe and when their plans get to DEQ and when they get approved. So there's like, we're already halfway through 2022, so two and a half years, if it's not to the point where DEQ is ready to stamp off, you know, sign off on it, then they will force developers to redesign. But yes, you, in general, you're talking definitely stormwater basins and stuff for this much acreage or they would have to offset by buying credits. You can, you can actually purchase credits and things which gets more expensive.
And there's a limit to that.
Right.
You can function, you know, a site like this with the current rules, there were still, I mean, stormwater is still a significant permit to get and it's a significant cost on the site.
But I will say, because I know this article sort of makes it look like there's no environment, that he is correct. DEQ is very stringent on it right now. This article kind of made it seem to me, there's just, it's just kind of willing, you know, they don't care. I can tell you that's not true. DEQ right now is heavy on it. And a lot of it is because it's new. It takes time to get, you know, regulations going, especially on new stuff like this, so. But they are looking at it happy right now.
Do you know if NRCS, I know as a farmer, NRCS pretty much requires you to have waterways or setbacks and things like that to help control farm erosion. This is considered a solar farm. Do you know if NRCS has rules or anything intact right now, Jennifer or anyone?
Not that I'm aware of. I think DEQ is the Virginia Stormwater Authority in this, in this, um, in this role, yeah, for them. Because farms aren't, aren't required to develop ENS plans for agriculture. I mean, as far as like if you have cows or you're planting, you're not, you're not required to develop an ENS plan.
Um, state may be delaying the implementation of this. There's probably not any reason that, that individual counties can't request as part of approval that they go by the, the new regulations as they're proposed.
Well, I will say something to that just a tad bit. Is there, it's not specific. It doesn't lay out specific. It, like he said, it is all based on calculations and everything. So it would be a little difficult, I feel like, for us as a county to be more strict than DEQ. I can say I do know some counties who do have written their ordinance for solar farms to have setbacks for other things, not necessarily just ENS, but and I know we're not to that point yet, but I heard some discussion before. I don't know if y'all were talking about these kind of projects, but there are some counties, Hanover I think is one, where they have gone into their county ordinance and already written into their special exception permits, certain setbacks for solar, certain things specifically for getting a special exemption, special exception permit for solar. So, you know, if it's something that, I mean, obviously we're not that big a county. We probably won't have 100 of these projects, but it's something to think about for future. You know, you can put in things like that as far as if you do.
It's just not very robust.
Right.
We do have a solar ordinance that lays out
Okay.
all of the conditions and setbacks and things like that.
We don't have a, oh, ordinance just for solar farm.
Alternative energy ordinance.
See, oops.
I'm thinking, okay.
So things in there too, but.
Anybody else?
I did have one thing. There was mention of, um, a couple of people at the last meeting had comments about the traffic and stuff coming through Buckskin Creek. Because the original route was to come off 360, as I recall, I was back there. To come off 360 up Buckskin with the equipment and the rock and everything. We did get some public comments that there were folks out there, you know, looking at the road for loads and all that. Do you know if that's true? And do you know what the results of that were? Like if they showed after the last meeting, we received some information that it looked like folks were out there looking at the road for load purposes and to make sure that that was, you know, would be able to handle that load. So I was curious if that's the case, and I don't know if you guys sent them or if they just came, but if that's the case, what were the results of that? And did they come up and say yes, that that would be appropriate or was there?
We, we had somebody look at it. I mean, we didn't, we didn't do like a deep dive, traffic study. But the analysis was that there was, there was nothing that would prevent us from using that route. I think there, you know, there could be temporary measures put in place to make it, you know, during construction, you could put some temporary signs.
Speaking of that, Jennifer, in their solar farm that's over my way, the trucks coming in are not much heavier than anything else that's been going through there.
Yeah, that's what I heard several farmers say that their loads are about the same.
The only concern I might have is I think during the construction, if you could have certain hours that they could do certain projects. I know when they're driving those poles, it can be kind of monotonous. So if that could be put in there somehow, like from eight to five, especially for the neighbors and certain, certain days of the week, but just coming from my experience in my area, as far as the trucks and all that, it's probably no more, probably less weight than the timber that was coming. it's probably no more, probably less weight than the timber that was coming out of there on the log trucks.
My only other question was about phasing. So when you're going to do the different parcels with the panels, is it all cleared and all worked on at the same, or do you go in and do a hundred acres, stabilize, move to the next part? Or is it, um, because I know some counties, you know, have requirements for that. And I just was curious as to whether you guys have done phased projects like that, or if you go in and kind of do it all at once. Or if you come in and it's stormwater is the main issue there, but I was just.
Right. I mean, like you said, it, it depends on the kind of we're working in. Um, you, you know, we would typically mobilize a site. If we're building a phase, we're going to build that phase and this would be, um, most likely at the same time, I will say that we are working on another one where we seeded the site kind of between clearing it and actually going and starting construction. So, you know, we can do things like that to, to help stabilize it in the meantime.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Well, this, uh, uh, I mean, a lot has changed. It's, it's in a state of flux with regard to solar farms. Virginia was one of the most liberal. And, uh, so we are seeing a number of localities, uh, change their, their attitudes and so forth, in particular, the, uh, you know, utilize the farm, farmland and, um, of course, uh, as far as the, the companies are concerned, um, you know, what's ideal for them is what's very close to, to where the power is needed. And if it's open, open land that they don't have to, to deal with, then that's better. Uh, but the, the, the real issue is, um, is, is location. Uh, and we're, we're seeing, we're seeing some changes that are coming. And, um, some of the companies are responding. I, I really thought that, that in the last 30 days that you all would, I mean, with a little more change than, uh, than what, than what it seems to be. Um, in our neighboring county, out here, uh, this is an article that's just on a, uh, and it's an appeal, uh, uh, on a, a special exemption permit, uh, for a very large, uh, solar farm, 2,942 acres. But of that area, uh, they're only going to use 350 acres. Uh, Price gave a presentation on the project, which he said proposes to use 10% of the total property and leaves the other 90% as wooded and managed forest areas. Uh, that's, that's a big change in attitude from, by companies from, uh, you know, when it first was coming in and just looking for kind of level cropland, especially down east. Uh, so, uh, I just, I just think we need to be aware of, uh, that, that it is in a state of transition. And if there's uh, some way to be, uh, working to, to recommend, to supervisors that, uh, we, we work toward the current stormwater regulations as they're, uh, being developed and proposed. That then I think that would, would go a long way to making people that surround this. Uh, I happen to not live next to that one, but, um, you know, we've had people in here that had a lot of concerns. And we need to, to recognize those. I'd like to ask, uh, Commissioner Comby if, if he's, since you're more familiar with that locality, if, if, uh, how people, I mean, where, where some of those are now that had had concerns after their discussions with it.
They, uh, there's a lot of people on Buckskin, West Creek, Dennisville and Pohouse right now praying that this doesn't get passed. Let me, so that answers your question.
Is the biggest concern property values?
Property values. Site, they've had to swallow the landfill. I've been on this planning commission for 15 years, give or take. I have never had the outcry that I have had the last couple of months. You can have a thousand foot buffer, but, uh, you got Rock River's done built a lot of homes right here. You're looking down a hill into a swamp and you got a hill going up the other side of the swamp. There's swamps everywhere up there here in creeks. Just sitting here listening, I, I'm, I talked to him and I, he came down to our offices and I talked with him and super nice guy. He's done everything that I personally asked him to do as far as two individuals. Going to them and, and trying to do what they can. He's been over backwards. As a representative of that company. But I've not heard one person at this boardroom jump up and down and say, this is the greatest thing in the world. There's so many ifs, ands, woulda, coulda, shoulda, buts, unknowns that it's not funny and we're dealing with people's livelihoods. 30% is a lot and they're concerned about that a lot, a lot more than 30%. They're all in lock, stock and barrel. Have any of y'all gone over here into 609 and looked at debt? And asked yourself if you'd want a half a million dollar home sitting right beside it? I voted for that. I voted for that and it was the worst thing that I ever voted for because it was painting the prettiest picture that I'd ever seen. I thought it was the greatest thing in the world. The more I got into it and the more I started seeing it, the more regrets I had. But now this one right here hanging out in the wide open, nowhere near as bad as that one. But we do need to learn from some mistakes that we've made and the people over here on West Creek and all that. We're their only voice that we got. And I told him when he came to meet with us, that I thought that he was doing a fine job trying to do everything that this commission is asking them to do and that they have, they have done an outstanding job. But I told him that I, I couldn't vote yes. I see these people every day. They have sat in my living room, they sit on my front porch and cried, cried. Grown men are retired, cried because of this. I can't vote yes for it. Not that I'm against it and I'm a Debbie Downer against solar, but I'm not really proud of what I did over here on 609. I'm definitely not going to do it right here. But to answer your question, I have not heard no one in that district, not one person. They, they, you know, thought it was the grandest idea in the world and they loved it. They would just love to buy property right beside the house. No, no, they're all worried. They're all praying right now. And when I say that, I'm not saying that lightly. I'm saying they're really praying because it's their everything. And they're concerned that when this one goes, this other talk about stuff crossing the road, you know? And if you've got one there, why can't you have two? Why can't you have three? They, it's just an unknown concern. You can't, and I told him, you can't voice yourself and, and worry about the unknown. You gotta just look at this. They've done a lot. They're, all of the doing is not satisfied the opposition. Um, I've got my vote and I'm going to voice my vote in a little while. And all of y'all's minds are probably made up before you came in here. I can agree or disagree. If anybody in here don't want to vote. No, well, my way, I'm cool with that and it goes to the board. Um, the people will probably come to the board. They're going to do what they're supposed to do. But I want y'all to know that this right here, the person, the people that are going to benefit from it are the, the landowners or the lease, the people that are leasing. And torch. And the people that are going to suffer for it are the people that live all the way around this thing. And anybody that ever would live all the way around this thing. And I don't really see how the county's going to get a whole lot out of it. I don't think my taxes are going to drop. They might maintain. But to me personally, the squeeze ain't worth the juice, but that, that's me. Um, if y'all want a motion, I've spoken my little heart. I'm going to give you a motion. We can.
Hold on, hold on a motion a minute. I want to say something too. Done?
Yes, sir. I'm done. I ain't.
My recommendation to us is, is, is to proceed very cautiously. I mean, this is a huge project, mo- more than we ever planned or were prepared for. You know, I mean, we've never, the other one, what, 50 acres or something? It wasn't huge solar farm. This is huge and it's going to be here for 30 years. Most of us are not going to be on the commission 30 years from now. May not even be left on this planet. But, but again, you know, we, we can't, you know, I don't think we have enough. I think we, the zoning committee needs to go back and reconvene and look at what we have as far as solar facilities have. I'm not sure, because I'm thinking when all this stuff was set up, we were thinking 30, 40, 50 acres. We weren't thinking, you know, something's going to be seven, 800 acres. And I think that's going to, it needs to be relooked at again before we take any action or before we approve anything like that. It's way, way bigger than I think we're prepared to approve, uh, right now because we have, I don't think we have enough regulations in place. Nothing thanks to protect the citizens in the county. I looked at the stuff from Charlotte County that Holly sent us. They put a lot of work into that. They've got a lot of, a lot of setbacks and stuff, a lot of restrictions. But at the same time, it, none of them seem to be unreasonable. You know, this, the, the, everybody calls this a solar farm. It has nothing to do with agriculture. It's a solar, solar industrial site facility. By their own description, utility scale solar facility. Utility scale is not agricultural. And so I'm not sure we shouldn't do, look at, look at the way it's going to be zoned for the future and everything. Like you said, I'm concerned about the 15 to 30% reduction in their property values. You know, the, some of the people that are involved in this thing and, and I'm a big proponent of people being able to do what they want to with their own land. They own it, you know, and, and I'm, and, and Mr., you know, Mr. Scott owned lots of land. He, you know, and he worked for it. He deserved it. He worked for every bit of it. But at the same time, if something goes wrong with this facility, okay, well, we've got some overland and another, not a way, we'll just move over and do something different. These people that live around here have five, 10, 20, maybe even 50 acres. That's all they got. If this thing goes sideways, they can't leave and go to another piece of property themselves. They don't own anything else. That's my concern is it, by letting people do what they want to with their property, are we not restricting what everybody else can do with their property? And to me, that just doesn't seem really fair. You know, it just, I, I just think we need, need more regulations in place, you know, and we have to proceed cautiously. This is a 30-year commitment to the citizens of this county. 30 years is a long, long time. You understand? I mean, that, that's a major, major commitment. And, and I, and there's some things that we, I addressed tonight about, you know, doing, you know, toxics, test on the soil after you're done, things like that, that should be added to your decommissioning plan. I'm still not happy about not putting a bond on it the first five years. You know, I mean, I, I, I can't support that and, and it's just, I, I honestly think that the zoning committee needs to convene and look at the rules we have and see if they're going to be sufficient for something of this scale before we make any sort of approval. Now, these guys have an opportunity. They can table it themselves. They can do that. Or they can push for a vote tonight and they may not like the results of that vote. And so that, that's kind of the choices and where we stand. All right. I said my piece.
I think legally we can only, uh, go 60 days. So does, does that mean it can, can be 30, another 30-day deferral?
I believe it's 60 days per time of application.
I thought we did one time, uh, two 60 days. I thought it was the way it was. Is that correct?
Well, I know you can do, because we've done either 30-day deferrals or 60-day deferrals.
Right, but I think we.
Whether you can expect a 30-day deferral followed by a 30-day deferral is what is the question I'm asking.
I'm just saying this is way bigger than, and I've done a lot of research over. It's been eating in my gut for the last month and I've been doing a lot of research on it. And I think it's way bigger. It deserves much more consideration than what we're, what we're doing here. I think the zoning committee really needs to take a serious look at it, look at the ordinance from the surrounding counties and, and maybe dress up what we have. Maybe we can accommodate something this big. But I think it needs to be looked at because like I said, the, or the things we have now are, I never imagined a 700-acre solar farm. Maybe if the solar facility, uh, what I was thinking is 30, 40, 50 acres like we've already dealt with, you know, and this is a totally different animal.
I think a lot of the talk about how much it affects adjacent residential properties, a lot of those instances are where the solar farm is right up against the road or it's very visible. That's how a lot of them are. But this, they've done a really good job, I think, of pulling it back in a thousand feet from the nearest home and
Really?
further from the second home and further from the road. I'm a Realtor myself. You know, I imagine if somebody was looking at a house and it was something a thousand feet away and was through the woods and stuff that, in this market, it's, I, I wouldn't think it would make a big determination or stop a sale. I, I also made a poll on the big WhatsApp and Facebook.
Yeah.
Um, and it was like 50, 50 for and 50 against, you know, like the apartments that was like 90 against and 10% for it. So that was pretty obvious, but I think, I think they've done as good a job as can be done to fit within our scope of the planning commission. I really think y'all just descend it to the board supervisors. Everything.
We do have an option sent to the board supervisors of no recommendation. There's three options, with the recommendation of approval, deny the recommendation, or with no recommendation.
I think we need to have backbone and give them a recommendation, one way or the other. I don't disagree.
I don't, I don't know what delaying it 30 more days is all.
Yeah, I don't either. Well, the only thing, only reason I was talking about delaying it would be, would give the, maybe the zoning committee a chance to get together and look at what we actually have. And then determine if it's going to be sufficient for this type of facility or is it, or too small in scale. That was the only reason I was looking, thinking about deferring it.
I think you got a great idea. I don't know if they'll be able to get due diligence and research and all done and come up with something in 30 days at the next meeting. I think what you got is a great idea.
How do you feel, Dave? Mr. Phelps? Rather not speak?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just crafting my statement.
Okay. I mean, you, you would have to take it to your board supervisor too.
Being, being Mr. Easter brought up those questions and those points, I would think as a board, we would still have to have those answers. So sending it to the zoning com- committee to, to look at that and just reinforce that would be good information for us.
Thanks, Paul.
We kind of need to know, you know, kind of what, what your feelings are too, because, you know, you got a big job ahead of you, one way or the other.
I'm, I'm, I'm probably going to ask the same questions that Mr. Easter asked.
All right.
If those were answers when it came to us, would be beneficial. Opinions, thoughts, anything?
I, I can tell you, and I've, I've done a lot of studying and reading and have had a lot of heartburn over it as well, just because I, I'm torn. And I can tell you, I'll, I'll take you through my, my thought process. And not that I come out one way or the other, but I do support the idea of renewable energy. I'm not sure that wind and solar in its current form is gonna answer all those questions. That being said, um, you know, it's gonna have to go somewhere because legislative, they, you know, have said that a certain, a significant portion is gonna have to come, come from renewable energy. Uh, I made a bunch of notes here, trying to get to, but and my, my biggest heartache is thinking about, you know, the people that had to live next to it. Um, you know, I, I sympathize, understand their concerns. Um, you know, they're my friends and neighbors too. But um, I don't wanna look at a solar farm. I don't wanna see it, but I don't wanna look at a, I don't wanna look at a big subdivision. I don't wanna look at a Walmart and I don't wanna look at a manufacturing center. So, you know, you know. But, and you know, honestly, I'd love for the county to be the county I grew up in where everything you looked at was fields and pastures and cattle and crops, but yeah, that's not realistic. I mean, things are, things are gonna change. To your point, I think we need to have a good plan, you know, going forward. And that's, you know, that's what, that's what we're here for. Um, you know, I'm, I'm fortunate that I've got some land. I've got land as a buffer. But it's also, that land is a investment for me. And I would hate for my neighbors to dictate what I did with my investment. Um, you know, it's, there's been people that said, and Richard, you know, mentioned, mentioned it, the only people benefiting are the landowners. Well, the landowners are gonna benefit, but I don't know too many people that make a business or start a business or make an investment when they don't, you know, they don't do it with the primary concern, what somebody else is gonna make. That being said, I think the county will get some benefit from it, not gonna get rich off of it by any means. And I would assume that we'll get some electricity out of it. So I, I think there's some benefits there. Uh, you know, I, I don't, I think the company has done a very good job. They came to us. We said, these are our concerns. You're too close to people's houses. You're too close to the road. Um, you're eating up too much farmland, right? Taking that out of production for the foreseeable future. If you go correct these things, we will come back and look at it again. I think they did that. They went and talked to the neighbors that had concerns. Um, and, and I'm not here advocating that we go forward with it. I'm just giving you my opinion. But I do think if we have questions with how the zoning is, if we nail that down and they fall within that, then I'm good with recommending that it go on to the board of supervisors and let them, you know, make that. But, but I absolutely agree. I think we'll be doing our zoning board a disservice and, and the commissioners. Um, you know, the, the board supervisors, uh, a disservice if they go through and we haven't given them all the information. How you address that and give it in the timeframe that we have, I don't know. But anyway, that's my thoughts and my thought process.
Probably would have to have a couple of meetings over the next thirty days for all of them.
Well, I'm in favor of solar. And I voted against the one on Gemato Road because it was, it was on farmland and it was a poor location that you're right into major intersection. The one on Giles Road, I was in favor of because it was back off the road and had a lot of natural buffer where it was. And I must say, I thought that uh that maybe in this last thirty days that I know there's some discussion, but I don't see much change in what was presented before and what's presented now. I mean, it, it, it's laudable to have a meeting with the, the people that surround the project. But uh certainly where their concerns, I mean, there can be more buffers. Uh, it, that, that is, is certainly uh a decision, an option that, that the company can make. And and certainly they could make more people more incentivized to do that.
Richard, do you get the impression that a bigger buffer would change their mind? I don't.
No, they're, they're, they're scared of it.
Right.
And their taste.
It's a matter of one thousand feet, two thousand feet.
But that, that landfill and all the stuff right here, they went through, they're, I just, that's, I'm not against solar either. I mean, personally, we're all small. I think Mike would fix some stuff, you know? Who could get used to things a little better. It is hip, you know, but man over there in that neck of the woods, they, they swirled a lot years ago that land. Allison sitting over right now, she was a little kid when it came. Didn't know what was coming, but ever since then, people over there in Maplewood and all and and you just got a lot of people over there that's retired. Um, I just had never had grown people come to me. Had two come to me and just, they teared up, start crying when they talk to you and, and they just beg me. The only thing I can do is, is what they said and that's just to say, no, I, I ain't gonna vote for. And that's my reasoning why is because these are my neighbors. That's the only reason why. I, I, Miss Scott, Justin Wade, all them, nice people, man. I wish they could, everybody could find some kind of way to work this out. But everybody that's around them, I don't know if they're coming to you or not, but they're coming to me and laying stuff on my desk at work. I'm bringing it up here to Holly and I ain't bringing a little bit either, am I? I mean, I'm bringing, I ain't asking for them to bring it to me.
I'm getting a lot of calls too and it's not my district.
And, and I don't, you know, I just haven't had nobody call me up and say, hey, I'm a hundred percent for this. Please vote yes. It's just not happening in one town for me. But y'all are y'all. And like I said, I, I can agree to disagree, but I'm seeing these people and I'm asking y'all and I'm telling y'all that they're praying tonight for this. This right here ain't gonna make or break no deal. They know that. I, I said all I'm gonna say. I ain't trying to sway nobody. Mine's already made up.
But you wanna make some sort of a motion or something, or we need more discussion? I'd beat it to death.
But we don't know whether we can talk some thirty days or not.
We've already deferred it, so we can't.
There's only one deferral allowed.
Yeah.
It can be thirty, sixty, but only one.
That's what I was saying. We used it up when we did the thirty day.
Right. I'll make a motion and get it rolling and see if they're gonna stop or go at the end of the motion, right? I'll make a.
Yeah, you have, you have, you have to have a second. If you can get a second.
You gotta have a second.
I got it. I make a motion, we deny it as it is here.
Anybody want a second, John?
I'll second.
Okay, John's, John seconded. All in favor of denying it? That is, that doesn't mean.
Open up any more discussion first, Roy, if anybody had comments. I think all your comments have probably come in.
Yep. Anybody have any more comments before we vote? You understand that if, if this is only a recommendation to the board of supervisors, it still doesn't stop you from going to the board of supervisors. It's like, okay.
Yeah, they, they need to know, they do need to know that it will be another public hearing before the board supervisors. And now they can postpone it, I think, up to a hundred and twenty days or maybe longer than that, but.
Right, the public hearing we, public hearing we did here was just with the planning commission, wanted to join public hearing with the board of supervisors. So you'll have to go through that whole process again with them, with hearing and then it'll be up to them. Any more discussion?
I, I'd just like to say if, if, if you know, we, we have to do something to deal with this tonight. And if the, the planning commission is uncomfortable with aspects of this, it, it is, it is not unreasonable at this point to pass it on to the board of supervisors without a recommendation.
Yeah, we already discussed that.
I know that's better uh that's been brought up and that, but that is an option. We can and that does that, that has some merit that we, we could do that.
No, but the motion's already been made and seconded.
Yeah, that's just a discussion on this motion.
I understand. Anybody have any more discussion? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion of denying the, the recommendation for approval from the planning commission, say aye.
Aye.
All right, leave your hands up.
My biggest thing is the bond.
All right, sorry.
All those opposed to it, like sign.
Larkin, did you vote?
I'd probably have to go opposed to it. I think we do need more information, but I hate to turn something over to the board of supervisors without uh really, if, if, do they want the zoning commission, would they prefer to zone, even if we pass it? Cause the majority now has, has voted, voted to go with Richard with a motion. But do the board supervisors want the zoning committee to meet to try to come up with some of these answers for them? But I, I'd probably go right now, what I know, I'd probably have to go uh with Richard with the motion.
So.
So the motion, motion passed.
I abstained. I didn't, I didn't.
That's fine. So.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Two, three.
So I have Roy, Richard, Dennis, John, Michael, Larkin in favor of Richard's motion.
The motion.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you abstained?
Yes. So it's one, two, three, four, five. Could support it, four against, one abstain, right? You, like I said, you do understand that's, you can still go to board supervisors. It's just not going with a, a recommendation for approval from us. So, and you have to go back through the public hearing and all the beating up that you've already been through once already, probably.
Yes, sir.
And so my biggest concern, like I said, the reason I voted against it was because of the, the bond. I, I, that still bothers me, but it's just, I, I don't think that, that our zoning that we've got is prepared for something of this scale. I think it's way bigger than what we anticipated having to deal with, with what we have in place.
So based on that, as opposed to what we just did, can we work on that outside of that? I mean, for another future one?
I think.
Is that something we can work on?
I think.
Next time, if we have a utility scale level, we are a little bit.
I think we need to. I think we, we should.
I think we need to be doing it because if they're, if they are due planning on going to the board of supervisors, the board of supervisors is gonna turn around and look right at us. So I'd say we need to have all of our ducks in a row. I mean, like I said, it's, if it goes without a recommendation, that's fine. But I have feeling that the board's gonna be looking at us and say, okay, what is the, what, oh, what is it? I think we need to be.
Board of supervisors representative, what do you?
Man, Bob, we, we're gonna answer the same question and I agree with, we're coming forward looking at it. While, while they're sitting there, we couldn't be wasting time.
Yeah.
Right. We gotta do it anyhow.
Well, and.
None of them heard.
I think we're a little bit to blame when we're getting behind the eight ball because after the last one got approved, I think we, the zoning committee should have been meeting then and working out some of the details in case this came up again and it did and we weren't prepared.
I, I think the fear factor is the main thing. Uh, no, people, it's ain't like a cell tower. It's one thing that everybody sees for three miles. It's a fear factor. My personal, ain't got nothing to do with anybody else. My personal thing is, is if you got a seven hundred acre project, i- if you did it in little phases, got it up completely running and got somebody to check off on it, whether it be the DQ or zone or whatever, make, give it a little time, make sure everything's gonna be right. Then add on some more. I think people can swallow that a little bit easier than they can if you just say, hey, all of a sudden we're gonna pop up seven hundred acres of solar panels because it is a big difference between seven hundred and fifty.
If you put in like a hundred and fifty acre one, a hundred acre one, and then you see that their property values didn't go down.
If you put in like.
Oh, yeah.
I think if you done like twenty acres and you waited a year, that's gonna maybe help on that bond issue too because you're breaking it up into phases. It gives the neighbors around you a little bit of chance to see, all right, the next twenty acres, we have problems of district. They come to the county and say, hey, let, let's try to, you know, fix the roads or the time limit, you know, you learn as you go. And they get used to it, but then again, if it is a big problem on say forty acres, you can halt that joker if you need to and say, all right, we ain't gonna let you do no more than forty acres on a seven hundred acres of a problem right here or something. It just gives you a time to, to learn about it. It ain't been enough time anywhere really. I don't believe to, they're everywhere, but I don't think it's, some spots are better than others and.
Well, they haven't been here long enough to see if there's real problems with it or not.
Yeah, I, I think the fear factor is the main thing and um you'll eliminate a lot of questions if you do twenty acres. If you make a bad decision and you, 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 you ain't screwed up on seven hundred, you just got twenty acres you screwed up on. You got opportunity as a county, fix next phase, break them up into phases rather than having it all at one time. Once you approve it, it's done. It's seven hundred acres. However, they wanna do it, they can do it. It ain't nobody administering them. Ain't nobody watching over them. It ain't their town. They just wanna get it done as quick as they can and make money. But if you do it in little sections, I think the neighbors there get a little bit of taste to it and they adapt a little easier and it gets done quick, quieter and then come back later on. That's just my personal opinion. I'm gonna shut up.
I think having some wildlife lanes and it would be uh beneficial um to that people would feel somewhat differently about it. You know, if, if it's not such a block and wildlife lanes would, would do that.
Yeah, that was a recommendation by, and I don't remember which wildlife group it was. It could have been National Wildlife Federation, but that was their recommendations. And so with solar farms, they leave pathways through so that wildlife could traverse back and forth one side of the property to the other. All right, anybody have anything else that needs to come to board this commission tonight? Holly, anything?
Well, I certainly appreciate all y'all showing up and participating in discussion tonight. I'm sorry I was unable to be there, but I have a meeting in Knoxville. And we got here earlier and I'm sorry that I wasn't there to help Roy out.
That's right.
At, at chair. I hate being, being the hot seat too. But that's just part, that's part of all commission members' responsibilities to take on the concerns of the citizens we have about us over the whole county, not just in our little neck of the woods. But uh, but I do appreciate everyone speaking up and, and making their um adjustments and, and, you know, giving everybody a different idea of where everyone stands.
All right, thank you, Larkin. Mr. Phelps, you had something to say?
Did we ever come to a conclusion that we wanna send it back to the zoning board? Do we wanna start that process?
Doesn't that have to come from the board supervisors to request that, Holly?
Yeah, now y'all can say it tonight that it's denied, but you want it, your recommendation is that it goes to the zoning committee. That's fine.
Those questions are gonna have to be answered.
I think the zoning.
Have a later.
We should have done it after the last one. Zoning committee should have met and talked about it. What happens if this gets bigger? So Holly, you think, are you willing to contact the zoning? So Holly, you think, are you willing to contact the zoning committee members and set up a meeting date? Who's on the zoning committee?
I was going to ask, but I
I know I am.
You, Travis, Larkin, Mr. Bates.
Well, yeah, Larkin's along with
David.
Larkin, when are you going to be back in town?
Be back in Wednesday. Wednesday late.
Okay.
Next, as far as I know, next month I'm pretty free. I don't have any out of town meetings that I know of all next month.
Anytime after this week would probably be fine. Travis, work for you? All right, you'll let us know? All right.
And we'll probably get to board supervisors. I notice there's three of them there, maybe more than that. If they happen to have some questions or concerns that they could give them to Holly, that we could address them at that zoning meeting, start looking at that and thinking about it, instead of us just the zoning committee trying to come up with a question from what we've had tonight and the previous meetings. That'd be helpful for the zoning committee, for sure.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all papers out? Getting adjourned at forty.